Okay, it's five o'clock and we're going to start this meeting officially. I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Ask you to please rise and stand for the invocation by Commissioner Wayne Neal, and I'll lead the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Neal.
Pray with me, please. Our Father, we just thank you for the opportunity of coming as a body together tonight. We thank you for where we live, and we thank you mostly, Father, for who we serve. We pray that you would just be with us in this meeting. We pray for our nation. We pray for peace and a coming together. And we just ask that you would just be with us through these deliberations. God, guard and direct us. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. I don't think we have any commission presentations and announcements tonight.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve consent agenda, general business and finance with the exception of any item that a commissioner wishes to pull to discuss.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Got a second, okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. That is one, two, three, four. That's five, four. And we have two commissioners, I should have said it earlier, that are not here tonight. I'm not sure Commissioner Booker's going to make it at all. Commissioner Quinn is caught up in traffic, but he is on the way. But that item passed unanimously with the five that are here. General business. Item 32, consider adopting an ordinance to authorize and approve the restatement, recodification, and republishing of the Code of Ordinances, Glen County, Georgia, to amend the code to change formatting and to correct typographical and grammatical errors to designate the municipal code corporation as the publisher of the Code of Ordinances and for other purposes. Ms. Patel?
Hello, commissioners. This is a project that I've been working on since last year. So municipal code corporation, also known as municode, we entered into a contract with them last year for the recodification and hosting of Glen County's Code of Ordinances. Currently, our Code of Ordinances are hosted on our website in a PDF. Authorizing municode as the publisher of the code will allow for a more interactive and searchable database of codes, uploading the code on the website in a more efficient and timely manner, and includes a database for previous versions of the ordinances moving forward. So what we're asking is due to this transition, there's been several minor formatting and text changes that are necessary. So the county needs to approve the code amendments to allow the rep publication of the code to municode's website. There are no policy changes being made with this transition. This is only being requested for the Code of Ordinances at this time. The zoning ordinances and subdivision regulations will follow after holding public hearings through the planning commissions. So all of the changes that are being made are outlined in the memo that I've provided, but a few examples of the changes include putting the definitions in alphabetical order in section 2-8-55, adding a title to section 2-9-50, changing the expression rites of way to rites of way, all being hyphenated throughout the code to make it all uniform, adding the title definitions to section 2-11-1, changing the word floodproofing to being one word rather than being hyphenated as per FEMA's guidelines. So as you can see, these are very minor changes. None of these are policy changes, and we're only requesting this change because of formatting and grammatical errors. This is the recommended motion, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, Duane. Thank you much. Commissioners, do you all have any questions you want to ask Duane? Looks pretty straightforward to me. And apparently this is something we're going to have to make a motion and vote on if we can.
Well, okay. I move to adopting an ordinance to authorize and approve the restatement, recodification, and republishing of the Code of Ordinances, Glen County, Georgia, to amend the code, change formatting, and to great typographical error and grammatical errors to designate the municipal code corporation as the publisher of the Code of Ordinances and for other purposes.
Okay, commissioners, we have a motion. Did I hear a second?
I guess everybody's solid tonight. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, commissioners. Item 33, consider adopting an amendment to chapter 2-5 of the Glen County Code of Ordinances to revise the flood damage prevention ordinance. Ms. Thompson has that tonight.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. This item was on your October work session where I explained that as a voluntary participant in the community rating system, which provides for discounts to any flood policy holders in our community, that we were notified by the National Flood Insurance Program that we needed to amend our ordinance to remove the exclusion of mobile homes and manufactured home parks not having to meet the one-foot free board in the flood zone. So right now, every structure in the county, unless it's a manufactured home in a mobile home park, has to elevate new structures to one foot above the flood elevation where they're located. The amendment before you this evening removes that exception for manufactured homes inside of mobile home parks effective January 1st of 2021. That is for only new mobile homes coming in. It would not affect anybody that's currently located there. If we do not pass this amendment, our flood, our community rating score would go from its current Class 6 to Class 9, which is no discount on flood insurance. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And Assistant Attorney, Senior Assistant County Attorney Will Worley prepared this amendment, and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, Pam, thank you. Commissioners, have any questions?
Ms. Thompson, the only thing we're considering tonight is just the flood elevation component of this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You'll make a motion?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we consider adopting the amendment to chapters 2 through 5 of the Glen County Code of Ordinances to revise the flood damage prevention ordinance.
Commissioner, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Just over here. Item 34, consider adopting an amendment to the Code of Ordinances of Glen County, Georgia, to inset the appropriate article designation numbers into the titles of the Scrap Tire and Solid Waste Management Ordinance, the Clean Community Ordinance, and the Tree Ordinance, to revise section 2-16-231.2 to add for, to add a definition for junk motor vehicle, to revise section 2-16-232 to add subsections pertaining to evidence of littering, to add subsection 2-16-243.5 regarding the control of litter and debris at construction sites, to revise section 2-16-249 regarding punishment for waste-related violations, to strike subsection 2-16-255A, to strike subsection 2-16-256, and for other purposes. And I read that because it's on the agenda, but I think...
Mr. Chairman, you did read that so eloquently, and I just hate to make a motion to defer that. I think there's some legal issues that need to be cleaned up. Is my correct there, counsel? So I would move to defer that to a later date.
Second. Any questions? There are no questions with the motion. Second on the floor, I ask for a vote. If you're in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 35, discuss the status of the Village Creek Boat Ramp parking area and consider future actions regarding the parking area. Is that for me to... You want me to?
Commissioners, I'm prepared to give you a brief history if you need it to lead into your discussion, but it's up to you.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, let me, let me tell everybody what's going on here. Probably a couple of years ago, I don't have the date down exactly, but the parties that owned that property came before us, and they wanted the zoning changed. It'd been, public events had been held at that property for probably close to 50 years, and it was not zoned for that. And they were looking at buying the property, and they didn't want to buy the property. They want to continue doing those things, but they didn't want to buy the property. And maybe the county have a change of heart and enforcement of their zoning at the time, and maybe then go and tell them they couldn't continue having the same thing that previous property owners were having. And they'd asked us to rezone it so they could continue with what had been going there with other people. So we had a discussion that night, and a number of the commissioners, we have some new ones here now, but we were very concerned about the parking. That's where the parking at and for the Village Creek Boat Ramp is located. At the time, we had an agreement, a lease agreement with P&amp;M Cedar, and we paid the property taxes on the portion of property that's used for that boat ramp and for parking. Had that agreement for many, many, many years, and we made that clear that night. And the commissioners, I think to a T, were concerned that we could preserve that parking for the public. We felt like that was the right thing to do. We made it clear that we were willing to continue with that kind of a agreement. And we thought that the party that was requesting the zoning change understood that. We didn't feel like we needed to have them sign a piece of paper that night. We're going to follow through and work with you. We didn't do that. And we probably should have done that. But the property owner, and we've had discussions with them a couple of times, they want us to pay all the taxes on the entire piece of property that they bought. They want us to pay all the taxes on the entire piece of property that they purchased. And I get the sense that this Board of Commissioners is not willing to pay any more than the taxes that are due on the parcel of property that is used for the parking. So that's why this is on the agenda tonight. We've been asked to pay the entire bill. They're waiting on an answer. I hope before we leave this room tonight, this board gives them an answer. And that answer can be in the form of a motion to only pay the taxes on the portion of the property that is used for the parking for the Village Creek Boat Ramp, and no more. Now, the taxes have gone up. That property's been reappraised since they bought it, so we're going to have to pay a little bit more than what we had been paying. And that's fine with me. I'm willing, as one commissioner, go along with the rest if they want to do that, to pay that. But if that's not good enough for the property owners who have it today, I'm okay with them to, they just make whatever deal they want to make with the public. If they want to continue parking there, fine. If they don't want them to park there because we won't be held to that demand, that's fine with me. That is fine with me. But we have done everything reasonable that we could do to preserve that parking for the public at a price to the taxpayer, at a price to the taxpayer. But I get the sense we're not going to pay their entire property tax bill. If I was ever to agree to do that, they'd have to sign a piece of paper that the public could use the entire property at will. If we're going to pay the property taxes on that entire piece of property, then we'll turn it over to the public, and they use it whenever they want to, for whatever they want to. But that's all I've got to say about it. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment here. I've been here since day one on that thing, and I agree with you 100%. It's kind of ridiculous. I was very reluctant, as most of y'all remember. I objected very heavily to proceeding until we got this parking issue squared away. And here it is, over two years later, and it's still not squared away. And now it sounds like to me that these new property owners, well, let's see, what has it changed hands twice, I guess, the new property owners now are trying to find a way to either extend the situation or place a tax or be able to get some of their money out of this thing. And I just can't, in my, my good mind, think that's the right thing to do. It's certainly penalizing the taxpayers. And I think this has gone on long enough. I'm going to say something now that I've never said the whole time I've been up here. And if we have to, if we have to apply eminent domain to this, I would be all for it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, did, I was sort of distracted for a moment. My fault. Did you mention the dollar values that we're talking about here? What our usual payment was in the past years gone by to what the payment being requested now is? Maybe to help get a better understanding from the public about the dollar, about why you're talking about on an annual basis?
I didn't on purpose. I thought maybe if, when you, if you want to...
Sure, I will. So...
Stay it out.
My understanding is, and Will correct me if I'm wrong, that through the years with P&amp;M Cedar, we were paying $1,500, $2,000 a year approximately. I saw an approximate, and this isn't exact value, but upwards of $8,000 is the property tax bill we're being asked to pay now. So, you know, a case could be made it's four to five times greater than what we've been paying in the past. Is that relatively close?
Yes, sir. I think maybe 2018, the bill was approximately $2,300, and the bill for 2019 was approximately $8,500.
Eight thousand?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Let's, let's have another history on it. I guess, where do we go from here, and how do we resolve this, I think? You know, there's been an appraisal, and Will, I can't remember what the appraisal on the parking lot was. It seems to me it was somewhere around $160,000. Is that...
Commissioner, it was actually higher than that.
On the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
What, what, what was it?
I think 275.
275?
Yes, sir.
What?
And Commissioner, I will say one thing about the tax bill, just to keep in mind, is I think one of the reasons for that higher tax bill is because the property did change hands in 2018, and the value then changed. I think maybe the value had not changed for quite a while before that 2018 transaction.
Will, how big is that actual piece of dirt we're talking about?
So I think the entire parcel is about an acre and a half. I believe the part that the county uses for the parking is about half an acre. So about a third of the property. That's going to be plus or minus, you know, a little bit, but...
Well, county may, we may not be able to afford to pay the taxes on it if it's 275. I had no idea it was that high. I thought it was less than that. What would, you got any idea what the taxes would, applicable taxes would be on a $275,000 appraisal?
I really don't. You know, so, and let me clarify, that 275 is just for the parking portion of the property.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
So I really don't know. We could check with the tax assessor's office to see what that bill might be, but it is roughly one, well, the area of the property that we leased from them is roughly one-third of the area of the entire parcel.
Well, I mean, it seems to me the first thing we need to do is establish a lease with the new owners. I mean, we got a lease with P&amp;M Cedar, and far as I know, they're in California. So I think we need to establish some form of a fair lease with the new owners, figure out what pro rata share of the, that we're actually going to be... out what pro-rata share of the, that we're actually going to be using for the public, and, and go from there. I think we ought to be fair, but I think we've also got a fiduciary obligation to the taxpayers to be fair to them as well.
Yeah. So...
Let me weigh in on that. You know, the, I know the value of the land's gone up, so there's not much we can do about that, but I strongly feel that we shouldn't pay any more than, as you describe it, the pro-rata share of the land that we're using. One of the other things that had been discussed, needs to be some upgrades to that landing area, and it's private property, and we can't, isn't that all private property?
Yeah.
Yeah?
The parking is private. The boat ramp itself is public property.
Right. But most of the property there is private property, so we can't, we can't put any money, the county taxpayers' money, into improving the parking area and the area launching, getting back and forth. We do have an offer from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources to fund the rebuild of that boat ramp, and the funding may take care of actually improving the parking area. But they won't give us any money unless we own the land. We've, we've indicated that we would be more than happy to, you know, if the land was turned over to Glen County so we could continue reserving that land and that property for parking at the boat ramp, and also get the funding from the DNR to make all the improvements that need to be made there. That's been rejected. The way I see it, if you're going to have that land there by your property, if it's your property, the property's not going to go anywhere. If we change its hands, it's not going anyplace. And we can make great improvements to it, and I think that would be best for everybody concerned, but apparently, everybody don't see it that way. So, things just stay in the state that they're in, given the situation, given the facts as they are, since we don't own the land, but if that's the way we want to continue on in Glen County and not make improvements in ways that we can, so be it.
Mr. Chairman?
But I would like to see, you know, give the attorney some guidance, county attorney, if it takes a form of a motion to what we'll support, and I would personally, I would, as a Commissioner, I would support the attorney working out a lease on the portion of the property that's used for parking, and no more, and at whatever the current tax value is, appraised value of that property, whatever it is, is whatever it is.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a text there. The tax value is 1% of the market, market value, so you'd be $2,750. That sound about right, counsel?
Yeah. That's kind of what I thought.
Just, I understood there was some, some discussions. Has the county attorney actually been involved with the discussions and negotiations, or has that been by some of the board members? With the, with the family that owns it?
Commissioner O'Quinn, it's been both. Our office has been involved for a long time, including with P&amp;M Cedar before they sold the property. We're currently operating under a 2007 lease that we had with P&amp;M. Since the new property owners have bought the property, we've talked with them, our office has talked with them a lot. I know some Commissioners have met with them and discussed it, so it's been a combination.
So, I mean, you feel like it's at a standstill? Is that correct? I mean, is there any room at all for negotiation?
I mean, I think there's room for negotiation. We haven't really had any substantial negotiations in probably a year at this point.
Mm-hmm. So, we haven't, you say that again, what you just said?
There haven't really been any substantial discussions for probably a year. I think we kind of got to a point where we weren't quite sure which way to go, and it's just kind of stalled at that point.
I think I'd agree with the chairman. I think we need to give the county attorneys some direction to go back, and let's have those discussions and see if we can come up with some solutions.
Mr. Chairman, I can understand wanting to negotiate this further, but I'm here to tell you, you got to stop and think about how much time and effort we've already put in this thing, and we've got an actual absolutely nowhere with it. And I think if we're going to ask our attorney to go back with them and make them, I would, I would go under the pretense that this is our last offer, take it or leave it, and, I mean, folks, we don't, you're talking about a piece of dirt as big as the end of your thumbprint, and, I mean, this is, what are we going to do? We're going to cut off a 100-year boat ramp? It's been, I know it's mostly the local fellows on that end of the island down there. It's really the only public ramp down there, or on the island, and it's been used for so many years, and I realize this is, what, 200, 250 people max that probably would use that over a period of 12 months, but at the same time, it's there, it's been there, it's all but historic, and the last couple of owners have just been sitting there trying to see what they can beat the county out of, and I just, I just can't see going on and on and on with it.
I agree with you. It's historic. I would probably argue that the numbers using it are more than 250 a year, because when you look at the folks that are using it as kayak and kayak fishermen, as well as boats, and having the opportunity to be down there on that end of the island, you know, you see a lot of boats that are coming off the causeway, coming over there, because it's the only easterly-facing ramp we have on St. Simon's Boat Ramp. So, I agree with you that it's certainly, there's some historical value there. I think it's a resource that people do use throughout the county, and my position to be is, let's direct the county attorney, go back and try one more time and see if we can hammer something out. I think the owners have heard this, this board's hard about it. Maybe that'll lead to some kind of discussion and hopefully, some kind of movement. I was surprised to hear that we haven't had substantial negotiations in over a year.
Well, I think two of the principals are here, and as well as the attorney for the family, and we certainly don't want to exclude you. If you'd like to make a statement or say something, that'd be fine, but if you don't, that's fine as well.
Yeah. Well, we had a, again, I go back to that fateful night, and we had a very lengthy discussion. If anybody wants to go back and look at that meeting, there was no doubt in anybody's mind what this board, this board was seriously focused on preserving the public's ability to use that boat ramp in the parking area that had been there for years and years and years to come, and, and not just the Board of Commissioners that were up here. This place was packed. This place was packed with folks that were in support of that family getting that rezoning, only because somehow, they were convinced that that family would work with us. That was clear as anything could be, that that family was going to work with us and keep that parking. Commissioner Coleman, you were here that night. Commissioner Brunson?
I was.
I was here. It was, was it not as clear? Commissioner Stembach was here. Commissioner Booker asked pointed questions about working with us, and it was, yes, we will make that happen. It ain't happened. And for us to get a bill for all the property taxes, and our attorney down here sent us all an email, I got a bill, and it's just recently. I got a bill. What do you want to do? This is what we're doing. Mr. Attorney, this is the answer. This is what we're doing, and we'll see what comes out of this meeting. But it all started here, and hopefully, we'll, we'll push to some kind of resolution. It has, it has gone on, this, this, these people knew what we wanted. I'm not going to go and beg somebody to come back to the table. We have, we have waited for them to live up to their end of what we all thought we were talking about here. It ain't happened. It ain't happened. Now, this, this decides what we're going to do here. And like I say, if we don't get a, we don't get a resolution from the board about where they stand, what they want to do, you know, I want the public to know we have been over backwards to try to preserve that parking, but we're not going to pay, I don't think this board is going to pay all the property taxes on that property after we were told they're going to work with us. I'm not going there. And if they want to pull that parking from the public, that's on them. Pull the park, pull it. But we're not paying another penny over what the value of that property tax is on that parcel.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we direct the county attorney to make a proposal to the current owners of the property, that we would pay the pro-rata share of whatever the fair appraised market value of the parking lot is, that pro-rata share of the taxes.
And I'd like to add to that, that it's not negotiable. We've negotiated, I think, all we needed to negotiate on that, and I second that motion.
Got a motion and a second?
I'll just ask Vice Chairman, are you going to put some sort of timeframe on this, or is it going to be something that'll pop up again in a year?
That's a good question.
Why don't we revisit it at the first meeting in December?
Good.
I mean, a month?
Yeah.
To sort of revisit the territory has been, I mean, it's not terribly complicated.
And the other, the other side of this is, I think that if, if the owners are under the assumption that they, that we are going to pay the $8,500, then, you know, it's not fair to them to wait two or three years for us to say that's not going to happen. I think that we're long overdue, as Commissioner O'Quinn said, that we need to, we need to fish your cut bait, and I think that we make the proposal now rather than waiting. But yeah, I think the first meeting in December would be fine with me. Commissioner Murphy?
As part of the motion?
As part of the motion, yeah.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Attorney, you know what to do. Okay. Mr. Attorney, you have anything for executive session?
No.
Okay. We have nothing for executive session. Our next meeting starts at 6:00, so we are adjourned until 6:00.